Good morning, everyone. This is Dr. Val Arkush, Chair of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. I am pleased to call to order the April 1st, 2021 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Note the presence of all three commissioners, and we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A few opening comments this morning. First, we'll start with an update on the coronavirus. I want to emphasize that we do remain in a very serious situation with new cases of COVID-19 in our community. All of our key indicators are continuing for the second week in a row to move in the wrong direction. So while we will soon be able to rapidly increase vaccine distribution, in the meantime, it's critically important that every one of us, vaccinated or not, continue to wear masks and maintain social distancing when outside of our homes. We are so close to the end. You can just continue to stick with these important measures for several more weeks. It will help keep everyone who is not yet vaccinated safe until we have enough vaccine to vaccinate everyone who would like to be vaccinated. I'm very pleased and grateful to tell you that Governor Wolf and his team announced yesterday that 42,000 doses of Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine will be delivered to the county health departments in the four southeastern counties. Of that, Montgomery County will receive 10,500 doses. There will be no Pima-run regional site. The delivery of Montgomery County's share of these doses will enable us to significantly accelerate the progression through our 1A list, as well as more quickly vaccinate a number of essential frontline workers. We do not have a delivery date for this additional doses of vaccine, but we hope that it will be soon. With three months of operations under our belt, we continue to improve our clinic operations. Today, we are moving to a new system to handle our vaccine clinic operations and appointments. This new Microsoft-based system will provide users a much better experience. It will eliminate link sharing and the need to use a token to book your appointment. To be clear, anyone who's already pre-registered with us in our system will maintain their place in the line. We are just using a new software program to manage our operations. April is National Minority Health Month, and this year's theme is #VaccineReady. Unfortunately, longstanding systemic health and social inequities have put many people from racial and ethnic minority groups at increased risk for many diseases, especially COVID-19. These inequities, such as poverty, lack of access to healthcare and education, systemic racism, economic instability, and unhealthy and unsafe neighborhood environments have all created barriers to equity in our healthcare systems. This inequity has caused two to three times more serious and fatal outcomes for our Black and Brown communities who test positive for COVID-19 compared with white populations. It underscores the need for these communities to get vaccinated as soon as more vaccines become available. To that end, we've made sure that COVID testing centers were accessible to these communities and are fighting to do the same with our vaccination centers. Vaccination is a critical tool to slow the spread of COVID-19 and to help us get our families, communities, schools, and workplaces back together. We are working hard to remove barriers so that all of our residents can achieve health equity and have the opportunity to be as healthy as possible. We're partnering with Bethel Community Church in Pottstown to stand up a five-day-a-week clinic. We've joined forces with the leadership of Norristown to support expanded vaccine access for people residing in the ZIP code 19401. This includes partnering with the NAACP, the Municipal Administration, and East Norton Pharmacy to provide a clinic in the heart of the municipality, which will include registration sites throughout the city. We're also planning to provide transportation from the downtown area to the Norristown High School mass vaccination site. We've also teamed up with the Skip Act Pharmacy and the Jason Center to vaccinate 300 people from the Korean, Chinese, Filipino, and other communities this past weekend. Additionally, Skip Act Pharmacy has been vaccinating about 2,500 individuals at the North Penn High School. The county's providing 1,000 individuals from our Phase 1A preregistrant list to that group. We also continue to meet weekly with our county hospitals to strategize increasing access to diverse county residents, which has led to suburban hospitals setting up a Norristown clinic, and Redeemer Health setting up onsite clinics at affordable senior housing locations, as well as working with some of our faith communities. And finally, our mobile vaccination unit continues to reach seniors living in congregate care facilities who would otherwise be unable to get a county-run mass vaccination clinic. So far, we've vaccinated over 700 people and have many more scheduled for future dates. If you are scheduled to receive a vaccine in the coming weeks, we ask that you please fully fill out your vaccination record and please self-identify your race and ethnicity so that we can make sure we don't leave anyone behind. So today, I'm announcing a new initiative called Lights Out Monco. Montgomery County is extremely pleased to participate in this initiative to protect the migratory bird population. To do this, we will be turning off as many external and internal building lights as possible at night during the times of the year when bird migration is occurring. This will include One Montgomery Plaza and the courthouse in Norristown, and our offices in Willow Grove. Birds are faced with a multitude of hazards year-round, but few are more dangerous than artificial light at night and glass, which can cause birds to collide with windows and other human-made structures. Every year, 100 million or more birds pass through the Philadelphia region during spring and fall while migrating between their breeding and wintering grounds. Many never complete that epic journey because they're killed when they slam into buildings and fly into windows confused by the bright lights and glass. Through our participation in the Lights Out campaign, we hope to raise awareness of the issue of bird collisions related to the built environment. The first season of Lights Out Monco will start today and run through May 31st, 2021, when most winged migrants will pass through our region. The fall season will run from August 15th to November 15th. We encourage Montgomery County commercial building owners, operators, and tenants, as well as residential owners and tenants, to please join us in these efforts. The more that participates, the more successful it will be. I want to thank the Windcoat Audubon and the Valley Forge Audubon for their work with the Bird Safe Philly Initiative and for encouraging us to join in this important campaign. And with that, I'll turn over to Commissioner Lawrence.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two announcements to share this morning related to COVID-19, two programs that are available. The first is a reminder that applications are still open for the MoncoStrong 2021 Hospitality Industry Recovery Program. The county has received $9.4 million from the state to grant eligible hospitality businesses negatively impacted by COVID-19 from 5,000 to 50,000 through the MoncoStrong 2021 Hospitality Industry Recovery Program. The eligibility, application requirements, and program design were all developed from Senate Bill 109, known as Act 1 of 2021, signed by Governor Wolf on February 5th. In 2019, tourism and hospitality accounted for approximately 4% of all jobs in Montgomery County. And we know with traveling and gathering restrictions and mitigation measures that the hospitality industry has been a very hard-hit sector. So even though the weather is changing and we are getting closer to suppressing the virus, vaccinations are well underway, and new business guidelines will allow these businesses to operate at an increased capacity from 50% to 75% starting April 4th. They still have to operate within CD guidelines while trying to recover from the losses over the past 12 months. Eligible businesses must have their primary business activity in the North American Industry Classification System, Subsector 721, which is accommodations, or Subsector 722, which is food services and drinking places. Interested applicants are strongly advised to review the program guidelines and the frequently asked questions to ensure eligibility and to prepare to apply. Also, please make sure your application is completely filled out and submit all the required documentation. Program guidelines and instructions are available in English, Spanish, and Korean. And there's also a seven-minute instructional video, which walks you through the application process and offers tips and suggestions to ensure a complete application. And we'll be updating the Frequently Asked Questions section of the page regularly as we get questions in. This is not a first-come, first-served program. Grants will be awarded on a rolling basis, and the application window will remain open until all the grant funds are fully allocated. So make sure you take your time and allow enough time to fill out your application completely. Here's a quick update on our applications received so far. We've received 298 applications, 29 identified as Subsector 721, which is accommodations, and the rest identified as Subsector 722, which is food services and drinking places. Forty-nine of our municipalities are currently represented. Thirty percent of the applicants have identified as minority-owned businesses, and 30% of the applicants have identified as a woman-owned business. Four percent have identified as a veteran-owned business. And 91% of the applicants have indicated they have been in operation since 2018. This program is being jointly administered by the Montgomery County Commerce Department and the Redevelopment Authority of Montgomery County. Questions regarding the program may be submitted through the Commerce Department's Assistance Request Form on their website at www.moncopa/commerce, where all information about the program can be found. And due to the large amount of applications, feedback on individual applications will not be provided. Second, the Rent and Utility Relief Program. It's been receiving a lot of applications so far, but we are still accepting them. And this is for renters trying to remain in their homes after suffering financial losses due to COVID-19. Though the CDC eviction moratorium was extended through June 30th, many of our residents need this additional protection as bills are still due. The Montgomery County Rent and Utility Relief Program administered by Your Way Home allows eligible households to receive up to 12 months of assistance for rent and utility bills dating back to March 13th, 2020. Assistance can be for past due rent, utility payments, or future rent payments. Funding for security deposits first and/or last month's rent is also eligible as part of the program. There is no financial limit on the amount of assistance a household can receive. And $55 million is available for the program in Montgomery County through a combination of state and federal funding. And with this amount of funding, we are aiming to serve anywhere between 1,900 and 3,800 households. Your Way Home and our partners are processing applications as quickly as possible. So far, over 1,300 people have applied, and we have helped approximately 200 Montgomery County households representing $1.1 million in funds given. Eligibility requirements for the Rent and Utility Relief Program include: the household must be in Montgomery County, and one or more individuals in the household is qualified for unemployment benefits or experienced a reduction in household income, incurred significant costs, or experienced other financial hardships due directly or indirectly to the COVID-19 pandemic. And the household can demonstrate a risk of homelessness or housing instability. And the household must be at or below 80% of the area median income at the time of application. To apply, residents are encouraged to call 211 or text their ZIP code to 898-211. Applications can be done over the phone, in person, emailed, or a combination of both. Residents can also reach out to one of these six partner organizations to learn more about the program and apply: Aklamo, Family Services of Montgomery County, Mano on Main Street, the YWCA Tri-County Area, CADCOM, or the Pottstown Cluster of Religious Communities. All of this information can be found online at www.yourwayhome.org/eruc, or as I said, you can call 211 for more details. Anyone who lives in Montgomery County that is struggling to pay their rent or utility bills are encouraged to apply, and we are accepting applications on a rolling basis. That concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Gail, any comments?
Good morning, everyone. I have no opening comments. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Then we will move on to public comment on matters appearing on the agenda. Ms. Cofrancisco, do we have anybody?
Just a reminder, if you would like to provide public comment, you can use the raise your hand feature, which is found under the participants list. We do have one person with their hand raised, so I will ask the solicitor to read the rules.
Mr. Stein? Oh, Mr. Stein, you're muted.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. Speakers should identify themselves by name and municipality. All public comments must be relevant or germane to county business. Under the law, this means that the subject matter, while comments, must be limited to items or issues which are currently before the commissioners for consideration or which may come before the commissioners for consideration at a future meeting. Whether a matter is germane to county business is a determination to be made by the county solicitor. Profane, slanderous, or discriminatory language or comments will not be tolerated in accordance with the county's nondiscrimination policy. Time limits of two minutes will be monitored, and county staff will respectfully request speakers to conclude their comments if the speaker goes beyond the time allotted. The board is not required to respond to public comments during the course of the meeting, so the public is reminded that this is not an opportunity for dialogue or questions and answers. The board chair may direct appropriate county staff to follow up on any questions or additional comments after the meeting. Disruptive behavior, including but not limited to yelling out or attempting to anyway disrupt the meeting, arguing with the county solicitor regarding whether a matter is germane to county business once determination has been made, or refusing to yield the floor once time has elapsed and been requested to wrap up comments, shall be grounds for muting or removal from the meeting without further admonishment or warning. As always, the commissioners welcome feedback at commissioners@moncopa.org.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. All right, Ms. Cofrancisco, we can go ahead.
Great. Our first person up will be Lydia Krizminski. You are now unmuted.
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Lydia Torres Krizminski. I am a Montgomery County volunteer long-term ombudsman. Both my husband, John, and I oppose the RFP under Letter 1, Number 3, listed on the agenda regarding the decision to outsource the Montgomery County Long-Term Care Ombudsman Program while we are in the midst of an ongoing COVID-19 pandemic that has negatively affected the long-term care community globally. Ombudsmen are now allowed reentry into long-term care facilities, and I imagine what we are going to see will be extremely emotional after being locked out for over a year from visiting and advocating for residents. We have a dedicated and experienced group of qualified ombudsmen that have been given a July 1st intensive furlough. These ombudsmen can navigate through any critical issues that we are about to witness. For years, they have built good relationships with long-term care facilities, staff, and residents living in long-term care facilities. This is not the time to disrupt this important work. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Krizminski, and thank you for your work as an ombudsman. Ms. Cofrancisco, any other comments?
Yes, we have. Next is Laura Lehman. You have been unmuted.
Good morning.
All right, good morning. So I would like to just start by saying that your speaking rules are in violation of the Sunshine Law, that we absolutely cannot in two minutes make reasonable comments if we have, for instance, more than one item on the agenda. And again, you know, I want to say that the decisions made by Mr. Stein are often made as soon as he hears something that he doesn't like and not when the actual cause to put somebody out has to do with understanding what the person's trying to say. So in previous times, for instance, when I tried to explain to him how it actually applied to the agenda or actually was an item that may come before the commissioners, I was nevertheless cut off and told that I was not allowed to dispute it. But the Sunshine Laws actually allow you to interrupt a meeting at any time that you have a perceived violation of speaking rules. And so that rule in and of itself eliminates somebody's opportunity to explain their perceived violation. So that rule is in violation of the Sunshine Laws, and I'd like to see you have it fixed immediately, okay? When I watch these meetings with 830,000 residents and a $400 million budget, there is no reason for you to be cutting people off and trying to have no one speak more than two minutes. We need to have understanding of what's going on in our community and in our county, and we need you to address those things. There are many, many problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lehman. Anyone else? Ms. Cofrancisco?
Yes, we do have one other person, Carolyn Mitchner. You are now unmuted.
Good morning. Actually, I think she is still muted. There we go. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Carolyn Mitchner. I am in Montgomery Township, and I'm speaking today on behalf of my mother, whom I am a power of attorney for, and she has dementia, resides in a skilled nursing facility in Lansdale. And I wanted to follow with what Lydia had said, and I do also completely oppose the I forget, just outsourcing of the ombudsman program. I can't tell you enough how helpful and my ombudsman has been. I know it's Karen Dickey navigating the last six years of my life with my mom in skilled nursing. She's always been there, and I feel like being a part of the county has really just strengthened that arm that the ombudsman program has. I know that she is also well-respected. I mean, people, not just me, have benefited from this ombudsman program that we have. So to me, so tied to the county gives them strength and clout, really. And that's really all I have to say. I don't want to see a change, especially in this time when I'm in as a compassionate caregiver right now in my mother's facility since September, and I am one of the few people that neither knows to apply for that program, but I am in feeding my mother every day, and I see what's going on. And the ombudsmen are just now being allowed back in. And I agree, it's not the time, if any time, to make a change like this. Our group of ombudsmen are so experienced and have ties through the community, and I'd hate to see that change. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. All right, any other comments?
We don't have anyone else with their hand raised at this time.
All right, thank you. Then we will move on to general public comment. Is there any general public comment?
We do have one hand raised here. Back to Laura Lehman.
Okay, I'm unmuted. You can hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, all right. So the main thing that I want to talk about today is something that I have tried to get some interaction going with the commissioners to get this fixed, and there is absolutely no response. That is the last response. I responded back. It made no sense. So what we have to do is we have to have, I would like to meet with you, and I would like to see if we can get this fixed. Your Planning Commission is wreaking havoc in township after township with development that's being done at the expense of the people's rights. You have a planner in our township, Abington, who just wrote, co-wrote, the developer's ordinance for him that violated all the laws that we have there to protect us. It literally had phrases in that just said, "Our laws are repealed." That was called a boilerplate, okay? That's not the place where you put a boilerplate. You don't put a law for an apartment building, and it repeals all our other zoning laws. This kind of stuff has to stop. The residents are getting no notice. They were given a bogus presentation that did not represent what was being asked, and the planner sat there and participated in that. And as you know, you have a head of the Planning Commission who violated laws so badly that it caused a grand jury, and these are code officials that were bullied and codes that were violated, and he's now head of the Planning Commission. And yet, there's still an outstanding whistleblower suit with him as the target. And there is also a grand jury that did not go in his favor, and there were admonishments that were coming from that. So...
Ms. Lehman, your two minutes are up.
May we sit down and talk, please?
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you, Ms. Lehman. All right, any other general public comment?
We do not have any other hands raised at this time.
All right, thank you. So we will move on to the approval of the minutes. I will move to approve the March 18th, 2021 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. I will move on to announcements and presentations, and we'll start with the County Transportation Grant Program. Mr. Popeck?
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for having us today. Let me share my screen here. I have a presentation to go through. Okay. We are here today, myself, Matthew Popeck, the Assistant Section Chief of Transportation Planning, along with Matthew Edmund, the Assistant Director of Transportation and Long Range Planning, to talk to you about the Year 4 kickoff for our County Transportation Grant Program. Just a brief overview of what I'll cover in the next couple of minutes. What is the CTP program? What has happened in the first three years of this particular grant program? What projects have already been completed and are out in the public? And when will Year 4 kickoff? So even though you, as the commissioners, are well familiar with this program over the last few years, we always like to give a general introduction for members of the public that might be viewing this for the first time. So just to, in short, what is the County Transportation Program? It's a competitive grant program for our 62 municipalities to help improve their locally-owned transportation infrastructure by partnering with the county using some of the funding that we have received through the county's capital budget and the $5 vehicle registration revenue program. Why is a program like this needed? While there are many assets that are owned by the county, including 75 miles of roads, 115 or so bridges, one-third of our municipalities contain no county-owned roads or bridges. What they do own comes to over 2,700 miles of roads, 330 different bridges, and over 1,150 signals. Most of the time, they are expected to use either general funds or liquid fuels payments from the state in order to maintain all of this infrastructure. However, the median liquid fuels payment to a Montgomery County municipality is actually down 8% from what everyone received last year, only about $330,000 per year in order to maintain all of their infrastructure. Part of this is due to the COVID-19 pandemic and less gas tax revenues being available. However, liquid fuels payments have tended lower in the past couple of years. This is a map of the county facilities for roads and bridges that we have. Many other counties that have passed the fee for local use around the state are mainly focusing on using the revenues generated to fix their assets. But as I just mentioned, some of our smaller boroughs, such as Souderton or North Wales, and some of our larger townships, such as Upper Pottsgrove and Upper Marion, do not have any assets. Therefore, the goals of this program are to more equitably distribute this registration revenue since it is coming from all registered drivers across the county. We're trying to fund projects throughout the county and increase the overall transportation investment while still working to meet the goals of our comprehensive plan, Monco 2040. For the three rounds of the county transportation program to date, from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty, we have granted nearly two point nine million dollars in awards. This has gone to twenty-nine different projects across twenty-one different municipalities. And the projects have been varied from congestion relief and traffic signal upgrades to replacements of bridges and changes for the pedestrian landscape in certain areas of the county. While the year one round of the county transportation project mostly focused on traffic signals in partnership with PennDOT's Green Light Go program, years two and three have been more, have a open application period following any restrictions that PennDOT has established through their liquid fuels eligibility. On the screen, you see now some examples of categories that have been successful. We are four for four in terms of municipalities applying for pedestrian traffic signals and three for three in terms of municipalities applying for upper major bridge replacements and repairs. You see the municipalities on the screen that have been successful in applying so far. Some other types of projects that have come up and reviewed fairly well by our internal grant review committee, which, as you may know, is staffed with both county staff and appointed board members from the planning commission and transportation authority. Some of these other categories include emergency traffic signals, intersection improvements, ADA curb ramps, and pedestrian trails. I have a couple of pictures on the screen now for project status updates where some of the projects have actually already been completed. You will see on the left side of your screen, this is a picture from three sixty-three or Valley Ford Road in Worcester Township at the Township Line Road-Stump Hall Road intersection. The county transportation program funded in partnership with the Green Light Go program to install these traffic signal detectors, which are able to detect whether vehicles are in particular lanes and help move along the traffic light cycles appropriately. This bottom picture is from the intersection of Route three sixty-three and Route seventy-three, also in Worcester Township. While this picture is of a radar zone detector at Skipback Pike, Route seventy-three, and Penland Blue Bell Pike in Witpane Township. Year two's completed projects already out on the street include, on the left side of your screen, in Lansdale, a pedestrian crossing across White's Road in order to access the park on the south side, as well as in Springfield Township, where the school district partnered with the township to install a speed limit zone along Paper Mill Road in front of Springfield's middle and high school complex. We're now going to talk through the two thousand and twenty-one details. This will be year four of the program. We once again have one million dollars available in the county's capital budget. We are keeping the application pool open to municipalities who are able to partner with private entities for public-private partnerships. However, the municipalities must be the responsible entity for any applications that may come through. Our program will fund construction at a maximum award of five hundred thousand dollars. Local matches are required. The municipality is required to put up twenty percent for the first two hundred thousand dollars of available county transportation program funding. And for any larger projects, the county is willing to partner with municipalities on a fifty-fifty cost share up to a total of five hundred thousand dollars in total county funding. A quick run-through now of what is different this year. We have not changed the program dramatically from year three, so municipalities can continue to look for general projects that would have been successful applications over the past couple of years. What we have done is tried to tweak some of the review criteria in order to allow our grant review committee for a better understanding of what is in each of the applications so that we can use the county's raised revenue appropriately on the best possible projects for our citizens. This includes a clarification of review criteria where we are asking for a very specific tangible benefit listing with any metrics as part of the municipality's impact part of their application. If they're explaining how this project is going to benefit either the motoring, the traveling public, or pedestrians in the area, they should be willing and able to explain how those benefits will be done with metrics, if at all possible. We are also asking for a more extensive narrative for the county and local plan fit in order to ensure consistency with all available plans and study documents. And we are simplifying our funding criteria to just represent a funding amount that is being put up as a match percentage from the local municipality. In addition, we have clarified the reimbursement details with municipal services department of PennDOT's District Six office. We will be reimbursing municipalities up to the originally agreed grant amount. Any cost overruns will be on the municipality to cover. So here is the timeline for how the two thousand and twenty-one round will go. The updated guidebook has been posted live on the website for our overall program, which is moncopa.org/countytransportationprogram. This guidebook is being posted early so that municipalities can spend the next two months reviewing the guidebook and considering any projects that they may want to apply for. The application period will open on June first, which is the day after Memorial Day, and will run for the months of June and July, and will close on Friday, July thirtieth. In August and September, the submitted projects will be reviewed by the internal grant review committee, and recommendations will be made to the commissioners, and we hope to be back in front of you in the month of October for the final awarding of any sort of grants that have been submitted and confirmed for recommendation. Again, the county transportation website, program website is moncopa.org/countytransportationprogram. There you will find the two thousand and twenty-one version of the guidebook. We would encourage all of our municipalities to start thinking over April and May about which projects they would like to share with us, and they can certainly contact the planning commission for further instructions or any sort of sussing out of whether projects might be appropriate for this program. Thank you very much, and I'm happy to take any questions that you may have about the program.
Thank you, Mr. Popek. I really appreciate that thorough explanation. I really do have very high regard for this particular program as it works to make sure that that five-dollar fee is a benefit to everyone who lives in Montgomery County and really helps municipalities advance the projects that they want locally in their own communities. So it's a win-win all around. Just want to emphasize one point that you made there at the very end that a municipality can reach out to the planning commission prior to applying to talk through with you whether or not any project or projects they're considering would be appropriate for this grant. Is that correct?
Of course. The transportation section is always willing to work with our municipalities for any type of grants, whether they are through the county, through some of our regional programs, through the state. We're always available to make sure that whatever application the municipality is putting forward is the best and most competitive it can be.
Great. All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments for my colleagues?
Mr. Popek, thank you for that thorough presentation. This is a great program. I was particularly happy to see the completed projects as well that are coming on, that continue to move along. So hopefully we'll get some good applications this year as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Popek, I'd like to thank you for the update on the status of these projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Next, we will recognize that April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we have a team of folks from our Office of Children and Youth. And I believe Mr. Summers is representing the group. Is that correct?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. On behalf of my colleagues at the Office of Children and Youth, we really appreciate. Thank you for acknowledging the work that we do on behalf of the families and children in our county. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Summers, and I think you have some colleagues here. Would anyone else like to say a few words? Or we do have a proclamation for you, but before I get to that, I'm happy to hear from anyone else who'd like to speak. No, everyone's quiet today. All right, terrific. Well, let me just add a couple of comments. The work that you all do is so critically important, and it has been, it's difficult on the best of days, but has been extraordinarily difficult during this pandemic. And I just want to personally thank each and every one of the team for not skipping a beat, you know, continuing to go into homes and to investigate extremely serious allegations and make sure that the children in our community are safe. I also want to highlight the multidisciplinary nature of the work that you do and the multi multiple county departments, as well as community partners like Mission Kids Child Advocacy Center that works with the department to make sure that these allegations are properly investigated, that children are treated using absolute best practices with the eye on reducing any further trauma that they have already been through, not to exacerbate that by the process of an investigation. So I'm very proud to declare that April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and just want to thank you for your efforts. Commissioner Lawrence, any comments?
I know it was a difficult year for the Office of Children and Youth during the pandemic without mandated reporters. It was difficult. So I want to thank you too for not missing a beat, for continuing to go into homes and make sure that our children are protected. And this recognition is very worthy. You all have some of the hardest jobs in county government, and we appreciate what you do each and every day to keep our children safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Commissioner Gale, any comments?
Yes, Mr. Summers, thank you for joining our meeting today. I'd like to thank you and all the staff and the children and youth for the hard work you've been doing, and I look forward to meeting with you sometime soon to discuss ways that we can create efficiencies and better streamline the efforts to help children that are being abused in Montgomery County. I know two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one has been a challenge because of the lack of reporting from teachers and coaches that deal with youth on a regular basis and notice bruises, for example, on their arms or a lack of care, and they report it to the county. So with children out of school, for example, and not playing youth sports, those numbers of reporting are down, and I know that's a challenge, and it's very important to help the children. So I look forward to meeting with you and your team sometime soon to hear your input and ways to tackle this important issue.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us today. Okay, we will move on to resolutions. Ms. Fabry. Authorization to submit a grant to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the Schuylkill River Trail.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
So today, the planning commission is requesting that the Board of Commissioners authorize the submission of a conservation communities partnership program grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for trail development funds for the construction of the final link of the Schuylkill River Trail in Montgomery County. The grant application requires a resolution acknowledging that the county, if awarded the grant, will comply with the terms and conditions of grant policy document that would ultimately become the terms and conditions of a grant agreement between DCNR and the county. This project is located in Lower Potts Grove Township, shown here in the red circle, near the Arm &amp; Hammer Boulevard exit of Route four twenty-two. Next slide. Over the past twenty years, the county has worked to acquire the parcels shown shaded in yellow that will accommodate the trail alignment. The trail currently extends, you can see it in green at the top of the screen, along industrial highway in Pottstown, and it will connect and go through these properties extending for approximately one mile and will connect to the Route four twenty-two bridge. Next. The Route four twenty-two bridge was replaced by PennDOT several years ago and incorporates a dedicated lane that will serve as the trail crossing between Montgomery and Chester Counties. Next slide. And then Chester County is currently working to complete their section of the Schuylkill River Trail that will ultimately connect Philadelphia to Pottstown uninterrupted off-road. Next slide. So our two thousand and twenty-one DCNR C two P two grant application for construction, we currently estimate construction costs at seven hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. We have five hundred and forty-two thousand in grant funds secured from the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. Our anticipated ask of DCNR is two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. So if that amount is awarded, there essentially would be no cost to the county for construction funds. The project is currently in design phase. We started in January of this year. We have DCNR grant funding to offset the cost of design, and we anticipate that design will be completed by the end of the year and that we will be able to put this project out to bid in January next year. So we want to try to keep this moving. The grant awards would be announced in November, which is perfect timing for us to go into construction. And then we could complete this trail essentially, hopefully by the end of two thousand and twenty-two. And Chester County section from Parkerford up to the Route four twenty-two bridge is currently under construction. It is on track for completion by December of this year. So again, just the ultimate will be to make this important connection uninterrupted off-road access between Pottstown and Philadelphia. Thank you.
Thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to submit an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the Schuylkill River Trail connector to Route four twenty-two development project. Be further resolved that the grant agreement signature page may be signed on behalf of Montgomery County by Mr. Scott France, Executive Director of the Montgomery County Planning Commission. And further, that if the county is awarded the grant, the grant agreement signature page signed by Mr. France will become the executed signature page for the grant agreement, and the county will be bound by the grant agreement. In addition, any amendment to the grant agreement may be signed on behalf of the grantee by Mr. France, and the county will be bound by said amendment. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Well, let me just say, this is exciting. This is an exciting day. Boy, how great it will be to be able to ride all of that distance safely off-road on this amazing Schuylkill River Trail. So I am enthusiastically behind this effort, and hopefully we will be successful in receiving this grant. Mr. Lawrence?
Great report, and looking forward to getting out on my bike and riding the trail.
Mr. Gale, any comments?
Thank you, Donna, for the presentation, and I hope the grant process goes well for you and your team. Thank you.
All right, hearing no additional comments, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Next, oh, you're still with us. Next, an authorization to acquire a trail easement from Norfolk Southern.
Yes, thank you. I'm requesting that the Board of Commissioners authorize the acquisition of a one thousand seven hundred seventy-nine square foot trail easement from Norfolk Southern Corporation in the amount of eighty-one hundred dollars for the Schuylkill River Trail where the trail crosses Norfolk Southern's railroad tracks near the intersection of South Washington Street, an industrial highway in Pottstown Borough. This is just up the road from the other project. The crossing was completed in two thousand and eighteen, as you can see here. This is just a little bit of administrative housekeeping. We're doing to make sure we're all final. Complete the project.
Great, thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute the necessary documents to acquire a trail easement from Norfolk Southern at a cost of eight thousand one hundred dollars for the Schuylkill River Trail. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second, my mouse wouldn't work. I couldn't unmute.
Okay, second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? All right, hearing none will move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Fabry. Mr. Hartman, authorization of an open space fund grant to Upper Salford Township.
Yes, good morning, commissioners. Thank you for having us.
Good morning.
Today, we're going to be seeking your authorization to allocate county open space funds to assist with the potential acquisition of a twenty-two acre parcel of interior woodland that's located along Spring Mount Road in Upper Salford Township, which is referred to as the Clemens Property. Looking at the diagram on the left of the slide, you can see the outline of Upper Salford here in red. The subject parcel is located here in green. And just for more context, the Perkyomen Trail runs along this line right here, along the Perkyomen Creek. The parcel is immediately adjacent to the Shirk Hut Easement Area, which is just south of the Upper Salford Township Community Park. And just north of the Spring Mountain Adventures Ski Area, which is owned by Upper Salford Township. So jumping over to the right-hand graphic, this is the Shirk Hut Easement Area, which is protected in perpetuity. The Upper Salford Community Park is located up here. And the Spring Mountain Adventures Ski Area is located right here. And this is Spring Mount Road. This parcel is also adjacent to the park to Perkyomen Trail, which is currently in design and under construction by Upper Salford Township. That trail will extend from the Upper Salford Township Community Park along this alignment here. It will jump into the Shirk Hut Easement Area, drop down to Spring Mount Road, run along in front of the Spring Mountain Adventure Ski Area, and then tie into the Perkyomen Trail in this location over here. More broadly, this parcel, the Clemens Parcel is located within the Spring Mountain Natural Area of the County Park Focus Area. It is a Pennsylvania Conservation Opportunity Area. And it's also located within the Swamp Creek Natural Areas Inventory Conservation Landscape as designated by the county. The preservation of this parcel is consistent with recommendations found in the county's natural areas inventory, including protecting large uninterrupted forest blocks through the county open space program and targeting additional forest, forested lands adjacent to currently protected forest areas. And as you can see, this parcel is within a fairly significantly large contiguous woodland area. The Clemens Parcel is currently on the market and was recently appraised at $313,000. With the assistance of the county, Upper Salford Township will be submitting a C2P2 Grant Application to DCNR next month, requesting 50% of the parcel's appraised value or $156,500. Upper Salford Township is requesting a $156,500 match from the Montgomery, from Montgomery County for the remaining 50% of the appraised value. And these funds would come from the county's open space fund. Therefore, should Upper Salford Township secure the DCNR grant and the county authorize the allocation of the requested open space funds, Upper Salford Township could purchase the parcel and would ultimately be responsible for its long-term stewardship. It's also important to note that Upper Salford Township is contributing $5,000 for costs associated with the purchase. March 24th, 2021, the Montgomery County Open Space Board recommended the allocation of open space funds in the amount of 50% of the appraised value of the property to serve as the required 50% match to the potential DCNR C2P2 Grant Award. I also wanted to note that Upper Salford Township has concurrently submitted two county 2040 implementation grant applications. One for the construction of the Park to Perkyomen Trail that I described earlier. And the other to cover the acquired 50% DCNR match for the acquisition of the Clemens Property. Because municipalities are limited to just one 2040 grant award and the township has made it clear that the Park to Perkyomen Trail Project is its priority 2040 grant application. The county open space funds Upper Salford is requesting today may or may not be utilized as the DCNR match, depending on the outcome of the 2040 grant award process. However, DCNR, as you know, requires a firm commitment from the applicant that the 50% match is secured. Which is why we're seeking your approval today to commit open space funds to the Clemens Acquisition, should it be needed. And lastly, as with many potential open space acquisition projects, there are numerous factors that can influence the ultimate outcome. Including the success and the timing of grant applications and landowner actions that may impact a property's long-term preservation. With the county's authorization of the requested open space funds, Upper Salford may pursue the desired DCNR funding and hopefully the ultimate acquisition of Clemens Parcel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby authorize an open space fund grant award of $156,500 to Upper Salford Township for the acquisition and preservation of the Clemens Property as more fully described in this resolution, subject to the conditions in the attached Exhibit 1. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, thank you, Mr. Hartman.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to a reappointment to the Montgomery County Housing Authority. I will move that Joyce Sacco be reappointed to the Montgomery County Housing Authority for a term that begins immediately and expires on April 1st, 2026. And to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Ms. O'Malley, advertisement of a bid and RFPs.
Yes, we have a bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for barn rehabilitation services. The successful responder will provide barn rehabilitation services at Peter Wentz Farmstead. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Two, RFP on behalf of assets and infrastructure for a historic structure report for Potts Grove Manor. The successful responder will write a comprehensive narrative incorporating past research findings with existing conditions of the house. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder. Three, RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for ombudsman services. The successful responder will be state certified and trained to actively advocate and give voice to consumers of long-term care services. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder. All bids and RFPs are available on the county's purchasing website at www.montcopa.org/purchasing.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding requests for the advertisement of a bid and RFPs as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley. And to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Will second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Ms. O'Malley, would you please share with us some of the background on the RFP for the ombudsman services, please?
Yes, the state has identified an inherent conflict of interest with counties operating the ombudsman program in relationship to the other services the county provides. And in recent years, they do not allow full supervision of ombudsman staff by county management. In fact, for example, county management does not have access to the database and data system the ombudsman use to manage their program. In addition, many counties within Pennsylvania have transitioned to an outsourced program. This has happened during the pandemic and prior to the pandemic as well. The state has reviewed our plan to transition to a private provider and reviewed and support the program. I will say it was a very difficult decision. We have wonderful staff and wonderful volunteers. The RFP does require that all our staff are interviewed and that also the volunteer program will be maintained.
All right, thank you, Ms. O'Malley. I appreciate that background. Any other comments? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. We'll move on to awards of contract. Ms. O'Malley?
Yes, one, contract award, assets and infrastructure, GOE International LLC of Newtown, PA, $12,950. Contract provides for underwater repairs at the gatehouse of Night Dam and Green Lane Park. Specification 6435 was viewed by 42 providers with seven responses received. Contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Two, contract award, Health and Human Services Consultants, Educational Data Systems Incorporated of Dearborn, Michigan, $124,990. Contract provides for an organization, structure, and culture and staff engagement consultant. RFP 2070 was viewed by 85 providers with 17 responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest rated provider. Three, contract award, Information and Technology Solutions Support Agreement, Microsoft Corporation of Redmond, Washington, $287,476. Contract provides assistance and support for problem resolution services on Microsoft products. Contract is for the period of 3/25/2021 to 3/24/2022. Four, contract award, Information and Technology Solutions Vehicle, Whitmore Ford Incorporated of Mountjoy, PA, $26,500. Contract provides a 2021 Ford Transit 150 cargo van for information and technology solution deliveries. Vehicle is available through a PA CoStar's contract. Five, contract award, Information and Technology Solutions Cabling Services, P2 Controls of Malvern, PA, $316,446. Contract provides voice and data cabling service for county-owned facilities. Specification 6433 was viewed by 60 providers with nine responses received. Contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Contract is for a period of three years with two optional annual renewal terms. Six, contract award, Public Safety Service Contract, Integrated Security Systems Incorporated of Harleysville, PA, $25,028. Contract provides links, technical support products for the 911 computer aided dispatch system. Services are available through a PA CoStar contract. Seven, contract award, purchasing, office supplies, Staples Contract and Commercial Incorporated of Framingham, Massachusetts, $145,000. Contract provides for a limited list of office supplies available through an online ordering system. System provides various controls for all orders to be monitored and pre-approved. Contract is available through a Sourcewell Cooperative Contract. Contract is valid for the period of 3/1/2021 through 2/28/2022. Eight, contract amendment, assets and infrastructure vehicles, Whitmore Ford Incorporated of Mountjoy, PA, $4,981. Contract provides for five Ford trucks and three Ford vans. Amendment provides the addition of a small crane to the F Ford, F 550 welder's truck for roads and bridges to lift manhole covers and the addition of spray liner in cargo areas. Nine, contract amendment, Information and Technology Solutions Contractor Services, Eastern Business Software Incorporated of Media, PA, $111,453.75. Contract provides technical contractors for the countywide computer rollout project. Amendment provides two additional technical contractors to fulfill the roles of mobile technician and help desk operator. Services are available through a PA State contract. Ten, contract amendment, Information and Technology Solutions Consulting Services, Infor US Incorporated of Alfreda, Georgia, $27,064. Contract provides for the upgrade of Lawson ERP V9 to Infor Cloud Speed Financials V11. Implementation of Lawson Business Intelligence, contract management, grant accounting, and a business process review. Amendment provides for first reporting and close management services. Eleven, contract renewal, assets and infrastructure consultant, McCormick Taylor of X-Ten, PA, $720,000. Contract provides for a qualified engineering firm to assist the county in the management of the county's bridges and 75 miles of roads. Contract also provides for the management of over 400 bridge structures and internal roads at our parks and historic sites. Roads and bridges will continue with bridge replacement projects and increased bridge maintenance for structural integrity and to prevent any structural deficiency resulting in more costly repairs or replacement. This is the third of four available optional annual renewals. Four, contract renewals, and nine amendments for Health and Human Services providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. O'Malley. I will move to, to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley. And to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Awards of contract for emergency procurement for COVID-19.
Contracts provide various goods and services required for response to the COVID-19 pandemic. One, response services, Health and Human Services, Serve Pro of Narsetown, PA, $136,395. Contract provides cleaning and decontamination services for the vaccination sites. Two, response services, Health and Human Services, Sinorama of East Narton, PA, $25,385.37. Contract provides signage for the vaccination sites. Three, response services, Health and Human Services, Johnson Controls, York Service of Horsham, PA, $51,535. Contract provides chiller and cooling tower maintenance and repairs at the King of Prussia Mall vaccination site.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley. And to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. And then finally, awards of contract for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force.
Yes, this is a contract award, equipment, Atlantic Tactical Incorporated of Philadelphia, PA, $135,259. Contract provides tactical vests and accessories for the Philadelphia Police Department Special Weapons and Tactics Division. Equipment is available through a PA State contract.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the preceding award of contract on behalf of the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley. And to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Are there any closing commissioners' comments? Hearing none, I will announce that next, immediately following this meeting, we will have an election board meeting. And that the next meeting of the Board of Commissioners will be on April 15th, 2021. I will move to adjourn the April 1st, 2021 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned and we will move into Salary Board. And I see Controller Sanchez and Ms. Pardue. Good morning, welcome.
Morning.
As we begin, is there any public comment on Salary Board, Ms. Francisco?
Again, if you would like to provide public comment, you can use the raise your hand feature that is under the participants list. We do not have any hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. Then Ms. Pardue, you may proceed.
Thank you. Good morning, members of Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board List. It is a three-page document dated Thursday, April 1st, 2021 with a timestamp of 7:45 a.m. Of note, we have one retiree, James Williams from Quartz after 18 years. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Pardue. Is there a motion to approve the April 1st, 2021 Salary Board Presentation as given by Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Pardue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same?
I moved.
Move by Controller Sanchez? Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn the April 1st, 2021 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board?
I moved.
Move by Controller Sanchez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Salary Board is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and we will move right into Election Board. Commissioner Lawrence?
Okay, I will call to order the April 1st, 2021 Montgomery County Commissioners' Election Board Meeting. Our first, and note the presence of all three members. First item is the approval of the minutes. I will make a motion to approve the March 18th, 2021 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Elections. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Arkus. Is any board comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Minutes are approved. Do we have any Election Board comments?
Do not.
Okay, public comments on items appearing on the agenda? General public comment? All right, we'll move to our next agenda item, which is authorization of changes to polling locations. Mr. Marlet?
Good morning. Section 2726 of the Pennsylvania Election Code allows county boards of elections to change the location of a polling place within any election district for any reason that may seem proper to the board. Today, I have 15 proposed location changes for the board to consider. These relocations are being proposed because the current locations of these polling places are either not available for the upcoming election or the locations have requested that the polling place be moved. Attached to your agenda is a document titled April 1st, 2021 Polling Place. Attached to your agenda is a document titled April first, two thousand twenty-one polling place relocations. Which contains the necessary information regarding the precincts being moved, their current locations. And where they're being relocated to. The precincts to be relocated and the proposed new addresses for those precincts. Are as follows. Abington fourteen-two will be moving to the Trinity Community Church at twelve hundred Eastern Road in Roslyn. Hatboro North two, Hatboro South one. And Hatboro South two will be moving to the Crooked Billit Elementary School at one oh one Meadowbrook Avenue in Hatboro. Horsham four-two will be moving to the Horsham Township Community Center at ten twenty-five Horsham Road in Horsham. Lower Salford one and Lower Salford two will be moving to the Lower Salford Township Building at three seventy-nine Main Street in Harleysville. Lower Salford four will be moving to the Encore Experiences Senior Center at three twelve Alumni Avenue in Harleysville. Souderton one will be moving to the Zion Mennonite Church at one forty-nine East Cherry Lane in Souderton. Springfield one-one, Springfield four-one and Springfield four-two will be moving to the Flower Town Country Club. At one fifty McCloskey Road in Flower Town. Upper Dublin six-one and Upper Dublin six-two. Will be moving to Congregation Beth Orr at two thirty-nine Welsh Road in Ambler. And Whitpain one will be moving to the Montgomery County Community College Blue Bell Campus. At three forty DeKalb Pike in Blue Bell. The election code requires that notice be posted at the existing locations. And that the existing locations also be notified of the impending action at least five days prior to the board taking official action. I have confirmed with the Office of Voter Services that these requirements have been met. And the board is now able to take official action to relocate these polling places if it sees fit to do so.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the relocation of the fifteen polling places named on the attached document titled April first. Two thousand twenty-one polling place relocations, beginning with the May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one primary election. And continuing for all elections going forward. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Arkus. Mister Marlet, do we have any sense of, of how many? Other polling locations might be outstanding or in flux at this time?
At the moment, the folks in voter services are currently working to relocate an additional twenty-two polling places for the upcoming election. We're hoping to have, if not all, the bulk of those lined up for approval. At a meeting in two weeks.
Okay, and both parties have been advised of these, these moves?
Yes, they've been advised of the moves. They have actively participated in helping us identify some of these locations as well.
All right, thank you. Any more questions or comments for Mister Marlet? All right, hearing none, we move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? All right, motion passes. Do we have any closing board comments? All right, I will make a motion to adjourn the April first, two thousand twenty-one meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Elections. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arkus. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? All right, motion passes, meeting adjourned. Thank you.